Hi everyone, welcome to the 1570 Project. It's another 1570 Friday and I'm excited to have joining me today Mark Sardella, columnist at the Wakefield Daily Item in Wakefield, Massachusetts. Somebody, a friend of ours had sent me some of Mark's columns. He's been covering in the Wakefield Public School System, some of the goings on there, some of this debate that we've been talking about on, on the Burn Barrel Podcast and on this show, kind of writ large, but covering it on a more local level as the schools attempt to get into some of these kind of nationalized issues around race and colonization and white supremacy and these things and, and how it gets handled at the school committee meetings. So, um, I mean, the first kind of big indicator I saw of this in Wakefield, Massachusetts is Wakefield is one of these schools that has had a Native American mascot, correct? The Wakefield Warriors with a logo that's an Indian head. So, um, do you want to tell us kind of like how Wakefield got here to decide that, you know, this logo was offensive to somebody and had to go?
Well, it's, um, it actually came up last fall when the, uh, Wakefield has something called a youth council, which is not the student council. It has no affiliation with the schools. It's, it's an independent town board appointed by the town council. And they decided that, um, that it was time to get rid of the warrior logo. They brought a presentation to the school committee and the school committee, of course, was, um, was all over it. And within six months, they had voted to eliminate the logo.
Wow. So was there any input from the community on that? Or was it just the school committee said, you know, this logo is offensive and we've got to get rid of it?
Well, there was input from the community. It's sort of like, um, you know, we're going to have the trial and then we're going to hang you. They just, they just, they took, they had a, um, a public hearing so-called, but, um, it was, it was stacked with, um, with antilogo people. They just, um, dominated it. And, um, and so the school committee took that to mean that they were on the right side and they eliminated the logo.
Now, wasn't this logo actually designed by somebody who was Native American?
It was diva-, it was actually designed by General John Galvin.
Okay.
Who was a 1947 graduate of Wakefield High School and a close friend of Richard Baird, who was, uh, one of, from one of the most prominent Native American families in Wakefield.
Oh, okay. So he was a friend of the family?
Yeah.
Okay. So, and so I presume if it was, he was a close friend of this gentleman who's from a Native American family, that this was not a logo that was designed to be in any way demeaning or insulting or anything of that nature, correct?
That's my belief. And I, I, I'm pretty sure the General Galvin's, uh, politics weren't, weren't extreme right wing, from what I hear.
Interesting, interesting. So, I mean, it's just, this movement's all across the country now. And we've seen it. It's the sports teams, the Cleveland Indians are now gone. The Washington Football Team has banned any signs of any Native American regalia from all their games. You're not allowed, you're kicked out of the stadium if you wear a headdress or if you war whoop or something like that. Um, so, you know, this is something that we're seeing across the board, but I think to me, what's fascinating is there doesn't, this doesn't seem to be something that like happened organically, like people weren't actually offended by this. This wasn't actually hurting anybody, was it?
No. In fact, I think most people in Wakefield, um, saw it as nothing but a symbol of, um, of strength and bravery. And, um, and so suddenly the school committee, when they eliminated the logo, they also drafted a resolution.
Mm-hmm.
Which included this apology to, uh, Native Americans everywhere for, for any harm that the, that Wakefield may have caused, uh, by having this Native American logo.
Wow. So all the harm that was caused by the logo, they need to apologize. But this is something that, you know, it's like a common thread running through, which is why I think all this logo thing wasn't, you know, motivated by anyone's actually having their feelings hurt by it, but by, you know, this sort of activist rhetoric that, that we're seeing now where it all fits into this like grand scheme of colonizers and harm and oppression that we're told, like, we're all participating in every day just by like existing and being on the earth. And, uh, you know, I wanted to play you one that, um, was on TikTok recently, uh, that, that was somebody talking about colonizers and, um, and this girl, and, cause I feel like this is like what's getting taught in schools now across the board, you know, from the, from, you know, college on down through all the schools. So here's this girl talking about colonizers.
This one's for all the people who get offended by being called colonizers. So if that's not you, you can keep scrolling. The rest of you, I don't ever want to see or hear you ever again say that you shouldn't face the consequences for what your ancestors did. You should, because in this exact moment, you're benefiting off of a system that was built by your ancestors because of what they did. At the same moment, natives like myself and even younger generations are still feeling the repercussions of what your ancestors did. So do not, I repeat, do not come onto my page or any other native's page and say that you shouldn't face the consequences of what your ancestors did, because that is complete BS.
So that's, uh, that's that girl. And, but I, I don't think she's atypical. I think that's what a lot of people feel is that, you know, we harmed Native Americans in the 1600s and we've been harming them ever since.
Exactly. And, uh, one of the, um, the, uh, a couple of the curriculum coordinators in Wakefield, uh, have, are attending something called Upstand or Academy this summer. Are you familiar with that?
I read about it in your column. Um, one of our mutual friends in Wakefield sent me this column, but tell us about it because I'm really intrigued by this.
Well, one of the, um, one of the core guiding principles of Upstand or Academy is that, quote, settler colonialism exists on stolen land and uses many forms of violence to maintain control, including the attempted erasure of indigenous people. So this is what our curriculum coordinators are going to learn this summer to bring back to Wakefield to teach to children.
And now you told me when I, you know, reached out about having this conversation, you said, like, I think that the school would, would disagree with the assessment that they're teaching critical race theory. They would say that they're absolutely not teaching it. But, you know, that sounds to me, like, I think it sounds to you, like, they're, you know, educating teachers within this framework, this way of thinking and looking to pass it on to students. So they're not teaching a class called Critical Race Theory, but they're bringing this in, what's almost more dangerous to like every class that they teach from now on.
As, as the superintendent would say, um, critical race theory is not part of the Massachusetts curriculum frameworks, so we're not teaching it. But, um, they are bringing in a set of consultants this summer and next school year to teach, um, the faculty about culturally responsive teaching, which-
Which coincidentally has the exact same acronym as Critical Race Theory, I guess.
It's got the words out of my mouth. Um, and one of the, uh, excuse me, one of the, uh, consultants is someone named, uh, Jamila Pitts.
Okay.
I guess, I guess the, the school administrators think that we don't know how to Google, because, um, if you look her up, I found a, um, I found a, uh, an article that she wrote where she talks about what teachers can do, um, to teach critical race theory.
Oh.
And I'm trying to find the quote here, but, um-
Yeah, take your time. I mean, yeah, I think that's so interesting that what you say that they think we can't Google people, because they sit here and they tell you to your face that we definitely, we obviously wouldn't, we wouldn't teach critical race theory. That's college courses. That's for legal studies. It's, you don't even learn that till law school. You have to be very advanced. You couldn't even teach that to an elementary schooler if you wanted to. And then, you know, you go look up and you see that they're paying Ibram Kendi $30,000 to give a lecture to their whole teaching staff on a professional development day. And you go like, wait a minute. Like, call it what you want. This is critical race theory, you know, this, or, you know, coming from a perspective of these critical studies, which is a Marxist concept. But, uh, this woman, you said Jamila Pitt? Is that what her name is?
Yeah, Jamila Pitts.
Jamila Pitts.
I found the, uh, the article and the quote. It's from an article she wrote in, uh, in May of 2020 called Teaching as Activism, Teaching as Pair.
Oh, it's activism. Perfect. That's what I want in the classroom.
And she's talking about what teachers can do to kind of incorporate, uh, current events and news into, um, into their classrooms to kind of give kids the correct perspective. And she says, "Teachers can allow students to apply critical lenses such as critical race theory and Marxist theory to the reading of news articles to allow students to think more deeply about who is being most affected and why." So this person, um, is coming in to teach the faculty, um, about culturally responsive teaching, uh, in a school system where they're absolutely not teaching critical race theory.
Right. And, and she's being explicit. I mean, when you say, a lot of times when you tell them critical race theory has Marxist roots too, they'll tell you like, no, 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 that's not true. This was developed by Derrick Bell in law schools in the seventies. It has nothing to do with Marxism, but it absolutely is a Marxist, um, structural framework. Critical studies in general came out of, um, you know, early 20th century Marxism. And, you know, it's interesting that she's explicit about wanting to teach it from a Marxist perspective. So I'm wondering now, you know, I assume that these generous consultants aren't offering their time to the Wakefield school system for free either.
No, I'm assuming not. Uh, it hasn't been explicitly discussed what they're paying them, but I'm, but these, um, these folks don't work cheap.
Yeah, no, it's a good gig if you can get it, I guess. I'm in the wrong line of work here. I think, you know, going into journalism and media, we've made some wrong decisions along the way, because, uh, I think the, the critical race scholars are doing quite well, actually, it seems to me, for the most part. Um, but, so it's interesting. So, I mean, how can you now, will this be made part of a public record? Or will you have to go out and request it if you want to know how much they're spending to teach the teachers, uh, Marxism? Or, you know, what, what will you do from here as a reporter? I mean, what do you do?
I, I don't know what I'm going to do, but I think, um, I think I'm going to continue to hammer on this in my, um, in the newspaper, uh, and just not let it go. Because I think they, they just count on the fact that people are, parents are too busy or they, or whatever. And they just, they, they count on the fact that parents are not going to look deeply into this.
Right. Yeah. And I think that, I think that this is a miscalculation, um, by leftist activists, you know, that they had sort of this moment last year when everybody went out and like raised the Black Panther fist in the air thing. And, uh, they got everybody on board with the Black Lives Matter thing, because I think, you know, well, for one reason, I think people didn't have a lot to do because of the pandemic stuff. And I think also the George Floyd thing was obviously especially egregious. So it felt like this big moment. And now they're like, great, now we have this in and we should push this stuff. But I think they are grossly miscalculating where suburban parents actually are on these issues. And that when you come in and you tell kids that they're colonizers and they need to pay for the sins of their ancestors, from which they're still benefiting, I think, uh, that's when the suburban parents start to get their hackles up a bit about this stuff, particularly when you're taking their money to pay for it. You know, that's what, that's what really bothers me is they'll sit around and tell you like, oh, you're crushing free speech and this and that. And you want government control over the school curriculum. And, you know, the government controls the school curriculum already. I just, you know, want to make sure that my views are represented in it and that my kids aren't taught things that are absolutely insane, since you're taking my money in order to teach them. Like, you already took my tax dollars. Now, now I get a say in what you're teaching. It's not, um, you know, it's not that I oppose your right to say crazy stuff in your free time. I just prefer not to pay to have it taught to my kid.
And, and if CRT is, is such a wonderful concept, why do they deny it? Why do they deny that they're teaching it? I mean-
Well, right. And they'll, they'll, you know, play both sides of it too. Like, oh, we're not, we're definitely not teaching CRT, but then if you ban it, they say, like, but, uh, we, the teachers unions are going to defend everybody who gets in trouble for teaching critical race theory, you know, a day after they told you that they definitely absolutely weren't going to teach it. So, I mean, they know they're teaching it. The, the biggest teachers union in the country put it in their agenda for their big meeting for the year to, you know, get all the teachers to do critical race theory. But I think they're, yeah, they're depending on parents to not know or to hear these one-off arguments in the media that, you know, that it's just something that's taught in law school. It's not real. But, you know, parents hear about the stuff that's coming home from school. So they, you know, they're not dumb. They start to notice this stuff over time when you make it blatant enough. And I think what's happening right now is parents are starting to ask questions and school districts are doing absolutely everything they can to avoid any scrutiny. I mean, I think the pandemic helped too, because parents were seeing a lot of the lessons that their kids were being taught on the computer in their house. And they were going, what are these crazy people saying to my kid in some cases? So, um, you know, now we have this mom in Rhode Island who has, she reached out to the school. Her daughter's, I think it's a daughter, her child anyways, starting kindergarten in the fall. And she reached out to the school to ask if they were teaching critical race theory. And they said they weren't going to answer and they recommended that if she wanted to know stuff about their curriculum, that she should file a public records request. So she did then file public records requests and they told her that it was going to cost her $70,000 for them to get the records to her. And, uh, and now the teachers union is suing her there in Rhode Island for, uh, asking if they were teaching critical race theory. So, uh, clearly that's, uh, their idea of, uh, that's, you know, what they think of parents who want to know what they're teaching in, in school classrooms. And so for you, I mean, reporting on this stuff, what's the reaction that you get from parents and from the community?
It's, it's split, as you can imagine. Um, I post all of my columns on Facebook and, uh, in the community groups in Wakefield. And I usually get attacked pretty vigorously.
Right.
And there are a few supporters who come to my defense, but, um, but a lot of times, especially with an issue like this, you know, nobody wants to be called racist. So, um, they, a lot of times I'm out there on my own, uh, on, on this stuff. Um, a, a woman wrote a, a long letter to the editor in response to my column from three weeks, two weeks ago, uh, in which she, uh, told me that, um, at great length, that, that I don't understand what culturally responsive teaching is. Just like, you know, none of us understand what critical race theory is either. We just, we just don't know. And, um, and we're just ignorant and how dare we ask. And, uh, so it's, it's always funny when someone writes a, a letter to counter one of my columns and it's three times the length of my original column. Which this was. So-
Yeah. Yeah. And of course, I mean, did she offer any, any useful explanation of what culturally responsive teaching is that in some way, you know, opposed or explained, you know, what the teachers are learning, if not that?
She did do, and I don't have it in front of me, but it was, it was so, um, dense that I, I kind of glazed over at some points. But she, you know, I, I had maintained that, um, one aspect of culturally responsive teaching is to allow the kids to kind of choose their reading materials, because you want to make the curriculum kind of, um, relevant to the students. And she, she decided that that was, that that was the case at all. That, uh, that, that this had nothing to do with the students, um, determining the curriculum. But that's, that's what, that's what it says.
Well, right. And I think there's a sense too, that, you know, kids shouldn't be forced to read, you know, quote unquote, old white men and things like that, that kids have to be taught, you know, in a way that's, that's aware of their own culture, of their own race. And we've seen some of that. There was a video that was circulating, uh, maybe a month or so ago, in which a teacher was saying that, um, that, like, that black kids weren't able to learn the same way white kids were, that they needed to be taught in like a more empathetic way, because they, that's their culture. And I mean, like, I've literally never heard such racist things said by anybody to say that, like, black kids can't learn the same as white kids. We have to teach them in a different way. It's really like astonishing. And I didn't think that we were at this point as a country where, you know, there would be people openly advocating really for, you know, black kids to be taught separately or differently. Like, I thought we covered this in the sixties and came to a different conclusion on it.
So did I. Uh, but apparently I'm not.
Right. And, you know, I think that, that the way these things are going in the public schools, that, you know, we're seeing parents sort of say no, but I know, you know, we're in Massachusetts, obviously, so it's more liberal. But do you think that there are parents that, you know, are showing up to these meetings and are concerned about this stuff and don't like the way things are going? Or are they just quietly pulling their kids out of school and sending them to parochial school or to, or homeschooling them or other private schools?
Well, up, up to this point, I haven't seen a lot of, uh, parents showing up at Zoom meetings or, uh, or school committee meetings in person to, uh, raise objections. Although I have seen some comments on Facebook about how they are, you know, they're, they're pulling their kids, they're going to pull their kids out of public schools. But, you know, that's easy to say. I, who knows whether they'll do it or not.
Yeah. Well, I mean, I did with the pandemic last year. I took our kids out of the public schools. And at this point, I don't really know if I'm going to send them back. And part of that yet is the COVID stuff and the masks and whatever. But, you know, when I emailed our school to ask them if they were going to be doing normal school again, their elementary school principal emailed me back with his pronouns in his email signature. And I thought like, what are we doing? Like, maybe they just shouldn't go here at all. Like, because it is so ideological now. And part of me just thinks that in spite of whatever you do, however many parents show up and yell at the school committee, like, the, the teachers are all hired. They have the ideology that they have and you're not going to be able to escape it at some point, you know? That no matter how many like rules you put against teaching critical race theory, that the, the definition of the concept itself is so amorphous that, you know, it's going to sneak in no matter what. I mean, obviously these things where you like pay consultants to teach more of it is even worse. But, you know, I think at this point in a state like Massachusetts, there's going to be some of it in the curriculum, no matter what you do.
Yeah. Um, getting back a little bit to the, um, to the warrior logo thing, they, they had a school pity, and I don't know if you saw my column from this week, but the school committee had a, a meeting on this past Saturday, which they call their annual professional development retreat.
Mm-hmm.
And so, um, it was posted, uh, as a, as a legal meeting. So, but it was not going to be on Zoom or, or on, um, on cable. So myself and a couple of citizens, you know, logo supporters decided to go to the meeting and just watch it, because they were going to discuss the warrior logo, uh, at this meeting, which seemed strange, because we couldn't figure out what that had to do with professional development.
Right.
So we decided to go to the meeting and we got to the meeting at the Galvin Middle School to find the, the school locked up tight.
Hmm.
Well, I had, I had to text somebody on the inside, um, and before they'd let us in. Um, and they did discuss it, um, but they really didn't get anywhere with it, because one member kept kind of, um, derailing the conversation.
Hmm.
She's a, she's a warrior's logo supporter and, um, she was elected this last, um, spring and defeated the, one of the most staunch, uh, opponents of the logo.
Interesting. So even though maybe parents aren't showing up, it seems that that's an issue. If that, if she made that a major issue of the campaign and people elected her, maybe there are more people out there that are just scared to speak up.
And, and the, um, the warrior logo question was put on the ballot at last April's town election as a non-binding question. The school committee had already eliminated it the previous month. But we had, or I should say, the logo supporters had gotten it on the ballot previously as a non-binding referendum. Won. The, the logo supporters won by 2,900 to 2,100 votes.
Wow.
And they, they didn't spend a dime. And there was a, um, a campaign committee formed to oppose the logo or to, to, uh, support getting rid of it. And they raised $7,000.
Wow.
But, uh, they were defeated by a group that didn't raise a cent. So the, the support for, for this kind of stuff that they're teaching in school, I think, is, is really not, um, you know, it's not everywhere in the public.
Right. And do you think there's kind of like an emperor's new clothes aspect to this, where, you know, it seems around you, like everyone is saying the opposite. So you don't want to be that, like, one person who says, wait a minute, this is really crazy.
Yeah, I think there's a, I think there's an element of that.
And, uh, yeah, but I mean, I think it's really true that there are a lot of people out there that, that do think this is nuts, that, that the idea that a respectful depiction of a Native American has harmed people somehow is just absolutely nuts. I mean, that's a religious belief, to believe that, you know, having that picture on the side of a building is, is, you know, causing Native Americans to, you know, make less money somewhere on a reservation out west. That's, that's like a metaphysical belief system that that can cause that from afar. But, and to me, I just think it's totally bonkers that anyone actually believes that. But, but I think that they really do. I think that they're sincere. I think that they've joined this movement and they do like cling to it with a, a sense of, you know, religious faith, that, that that's an article of faith. They start from that point, that, you know, that these depictions cause harm, that white people cause harm and that, you know, the past, this history of colonization continues to harm people today. And so I think that's like reflected in everything that they're doing in the school systems. So, I mean, do you think that, that like the critical race theory stuff, this, you know, having this Marxist teach the teachers how to be in the classroom, that, that parents similarly are going to, you know, quietly not like that either?
I, I certainly hope so. I don't know, since it's not up for, on a, on a ballot anywhere, I don't have to express it, um, kind of on their own.
Right.
On their own means. So, um, I hope that happens. And I'll certainly do what I can to encourage it.
Yeah. And I think, you know, one of those things that parents can do is take their kids out of schools and, uh, and, but not everyone has the means to do that, obviously. I do think it's interesting what a lot of states are doing, including New Hampshire, which is that, you know, bills are coming up and coming forward where, um, you know, the school districts will end up needing to give some of the funding back to parents if they're not utilizing the public schools, whether they take that to go to a private school or a charter, the same way, you know, the money follows the student when they go to a charter school. That money would work the same way if they were to homeschool or to go to a Catholic school or, or wherever. It would, it would follow them. I mean, I don't think, based on how like the ballot questions have gone in the past, even like to expand charter schools, I don't foresee that being very popular in Massachusetts anytime soon. But, um, but I do think parents that, that don't like this stuff will start looking to places, you know, where we are, we're only two towns away from New Hampshire. So I think about it all the time. I'm like, we're so close. We could be right there. Um, and, and we'll start like going to places that aren't going to, you know, force them into school districts that are doing these things that they, that they disagree with like this. Um, so, I mean, out of curiosity, do you, um, have you in the past had the school district or the town, um, you know, pushback on you for, for trying to cover things like this? For, you know, to, to give you a hard time or like not let you access records or things?
No, that, that, I think they're, they're too smart to do that. Um, I haven't gotten that kind of resistance. Um, and yeah, I, and I don't, I don't, I don't really anticipate it. Um-
So, but do you think the, the public records laws in Massachusetts maybe are part of the reason for that? Like, I, I've found personally, our public records laws are pretty good at, you know, making towns get back to me with information and things when I look for it. Has that been your experience too? You know, working in journalism and, you know, wanting information from the town or the school district about things?
Usually I'm unable to get what I want without having to file, um, any kind of a formal public records request. They, they, they haven't really denied me anything that I've asked. Um, and maybe I haven't asked for the right things, but, uh, and I know citizens who have filed, who have filed formal public records requests and have gotten, have gotten the information they wanted.
Yeah. Yeah, that's great. I was so shocked by the story of this mom in Rhode Island. Have you followed it?
I haven't.
Yeah. So she's in, I think, South Kingston, Rhode Island and, uh- Yeah. So she's in, I think, South Kingston, Rhode Island. And, and, you know, I think maybe her public records request was a little broad and that's why there was so much pushback. But I do think it's interesting that the teachers unions actually are suing her personally for filing the public records request to say that they're protecting their teachers' privacy. And I think that this is, you know, a kind of a dangerous trend. And I, I worry that we'll see something like that around here. I've never seen something quite like that around here. I have filed public records requests from time to time with the schools or the town, you know, to find out how something got paid for or how something came to be. But, you know, the, the idea that you would sue somebody just for filing the public records request is so incredible to me. And to say that people in their public capacity in the schools have like a right to privacy from parents is kind of a shocking concept to me. You know, for, because I envision it like if you were asking the school district questions and saying like, well, what's going to be going on at this retreat? What are you guys talking about? What are you covering? Who are the speakers? And they said, well, if you want to know that, you're going to have to file a public records request. And then you did. And the teachers union sued you. I just think that would be like incredible.
Yeah, that would be kind of a chilling thing.
Yeah, it's, it's pretty shocking. I mean, that in itself, if I were the mom, I would want to take my kids out of the school just on the basis of that alone because it seems so aggressive. And, you know, it, it's clear to me, at least as a parent and a taxpayer, that if the schools that badly don't want to tell me what they're teaching, that something is deeply wrong in the, in the school district. So, you know, I, I have concerns that that's something that's going to be happening more and more where teachers are going to start to assert to say that you, the taxpayer, don't have the right to know. And I've seen a little bit of that during the pandemic to say like, well, remote learning is hard because the parents could be listening. Like, well, yeah, no kidding. Great. And there was like this outrage when Tucker Carlson suggested earlier this year that, that we should be able to put cameras in classrooms and watch what's being taught and hear the classes that, you know, I as a parent, as I, doing my housework, I should be able to have an ear button and be listening to what my kids are learning on the side. And I think that's a great idea for radical transparency. I would sign up for that in a heartbeat.
Yep.
But yeah, I like the idea of government having to be like really super transparent. And I think part of the thing that's so dangerous about the CRT debate in general is that the schools are so hedgy about it. We're not teaching it, but if we were, we wouldn't tell you and you can't stop us. And it's just teaching about racism anyway. Like, okay, sure, that's great. But, you know, or like you said, even being locked out of the building when they added this meeting and they were going to talk about it. And, you know, you said that they didn't ultimately decide anything at this meeting. But it's interesting that, you know, they're having this public meeting and it's locked away somewhere.
Yep. And it was up on the third floor in a windowless room.
Of course it is. Yeah, that's interesting. So, you know, I wonder if the situation will be chilled more as this goes on because, you know, I feel that they are like very defensive about this stuff. And, you know, the gender stuff is another issue where I feel like the schools have been very defensive, a lot of times saying that they need to protect kids' privacy from their parents in case a kid wants to be called a different gender at school or a different name at school, that the kid has the right to privacy like that from their parents enabled by the school district, which I, I find really shocking. But I've heard that argument more and more from people.
That they keep, that the kid wants to be called a certain gender in school and doesn't want, doesn't want.
Doesn't want their parents to know that the schools will, you know, protect that information from their parents and not let the parents find out. You know, that, that students have a right to, you know, privacy in school from their parents. And, you know, I, I think it's a misunderstanding of what school is and what school does because school fundamentally is a, you know, a government function. So it should be totally transparent. Like, we, we pay for it. And even, even people who don't have kids in school pay for it. So they have as much right to know as anybody else. Do you think some of the aspects of this sort of, you know, I know these issues get super divisive, but do you think some of it falls more on kind of, you know, more like townies versus newcomers lines versus like a left versus right line? Because we had a logo debate in this town also. We're up in the Penntucket School District. So we had had the Sachems here in the past, like Winchester did also. And, you know, the Sachems are no more. But, but it was interesting because some of the people that wanted to keep the name, the Sachems, really were big liberals, but they had grown up in town and felt a very strong sense of place and a love of the history of the town and the history of the logo and everything. Do you think some of that is what's happening more than like a strict Republican Democrat kind of divide?
I do. And, and I, and I found that to be the case in Wakefield too. There were a lot, it, it came down to really kind of townies versus so-called newcomers. And those newcomers could be people who've only lived in town for 30 years.
Right.
But didn't grow up here. But the people who grew up here and, and, and were, who grew up with the logo, didn't see it as offensive. And, and the, the most prominent Native American family in town, the, the man that I talked about earlier, and his family, they, they said publicly that they considered it part of their legacy to the town and part of their heritage. And they supported keeping it. But the school committee went ahead and eliminated it anyway. But the, it did break down along kind of political lines also. But there was a lot of crossover from people who normally would be on the left, who still saw the logo as something that wasn't harmful at all. And, and couldn't quite understand the, the reasoning behind getting rid of it.
Mm hmm. And do you think, I mean, so do you think part of it is that maybe as a society, we're shifting away more so from having those kinds of like long-term family connections to places and to a history and to like the meaningfulness of having something like that? Because more and more I see parents like move to a town with high taxes and good schools, send their kids there, and then they move out somewhere else with low taxes and bad schools so that they can, you know, retire more comfortably in a different type of house. And, and there's not a sense that you even should necessarily like settle down in one place and continue to live there and then raise your kids there and they'll raise their kids there.
Yeah. And there, there was a lot of, there's a lot of mockery for, you know, townies and, and Wakefield natives, especially like on the Facebook and other social media groups where, you know, they'll just kind of look down there. The people who didn't grow up in, in the town will look down their nose at the ones who did and call them provincial and, you know, narrow focused and, 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 and just basically kind of, you know, just kind of look down the nose at them in, in a way that's, it's not pleasant.
Mm hmm. Yeah. And I don't know, I don't know how good that is for a sense of community. If, if your sense of community is only driven by this sort of, you know, temporary convenient place to live with a good school system and we're going to move out when we're done anyway, and not like this sort of long-term investment in, in being a place, you know, through, through a period of generations. Like, I don't, I don't know how good that is for a community over time too, to have that sort of, you know, that, that sense that, that what's meaningful about this is we're going to get together and raise our kids here and then we're going to go out. And the, the, the sense that you're almost dumb for wanting to, to stay where you grew up and where your parents grew up and do something there, that you're like a loser or sad or something for, for wanting to do that.
That's the attitude. You know, say things like, yeah, you probably don't travel either.
Yeah. Yeah. Get out and, and talk to some other people that live somewhere else. And then you'll know. Yeah. And, and I think.
The world beyond Wakefield.
Mm hmm.
Yeah. And, and I think that is increasing. When, when I was growing up, most of the, most of the kids I knew came from families that, you know, had been in town for at least a generation. But now I think it's, it's totally different.
Yeah. Yeah. I think, I mean, I, I grew up in Lexington and my husband grew up in Winchester and we both, neither of us is, well, we can't afford those towns anymore among other, among other problems. But a big part of what's driving that is the, like huge increase in property taxes and, you know, what people are willing to pay just to have a good school system with the understanding that they're not going to live there forever, that they'll do this for, you know, 20 years while their kids are in school and then they'll move out again and move on. And I think that that's sort of, you know, it, it ties into the housing values and sort of like we hear about the housing crisis too, because, you know, people are different, people are willing to pay a different amount of money for a, a school district when they have kids, then they're willing to pay, you know, for a place to settle down long-term. You know, if they have to, if they're going to, you know, have to continue to pay upkeep and pay taxes for a long period of time, they have a different sense about, about how long they're going to be there and a different sense of what they're willing to pay for, for a place. So I think it all sort of feeds into each other too. But.
I agree.
Well, anyway, thank you, Mark, for joining me. It's been a pleasure. You can follow Mark on Twitter. Is your Twitter handle just your name, Mark Sardella?
Yeah, except there's an S in the middle of it. So it's Mark S. Sardella.
Mark S. Sardella on Twitter. And this is the 1570 Project. You can follow that on Twitter at 1570project or me at Alice Shattuck. And we will talk to you next week.
Thank you.